Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Regional School District Planning Board meeting to order at five thirty-one. I'll take roll call attendance. Charles Ketchin.
Yeah, yes.
Carl Stewart.
Yes.
George McGurn. Tom Burkle.
Present.
Jim DePisa. Deb Phillips. Deb, I believe it's going to be late. Peter Taylor.
Yes.
Steve Bannon.
Yes.
John Silbert.
Yes.
Don Coburn.
Yes.
Kim Alcantara. Tara White.
Yes.
Susan Smith.
Yes.
Nancy Worthington.
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers.
Yes.
Nadine Haver.
Yep.
Colin Smith. Patrick White.
Yes.
Michael Canales.
We got a couple people and participants we just gotta bring on. It looks like she's doing that. Michael needs to be brought over.
Yes, I'm working on that now.
And then Bill. And James is there too, I believe.
Marie Ryan.
Yes.
Sarah Borla.
Here.
And Andy Potter.
Present.
Did I miss anyone? Hi Jim, I see you've joined. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Great. And anybody else I've missed? Michael? Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. And we have a new, I'm sorry.
George just came in. I just promoted him.
Okay. George, you there? George, you present? Can you hear us, George? George, can you unmute and just say that you're here? I think I heard you. And we, I'm very happy to announce that we've got a new member from Stockbridge. Bill, Bill, help me with the last name. Is it Boat?
Yeah, it's pronounced like vote for Obama.
Okay, good. Like the example.
Unless you're.
So can you just introduce yourself to the group?
Sure. First of all, I'm delighted to be part of this group. It's exciting work and I hope I can help and contribute to it. I'm a twenty-year resident of Stockbridge. I spent a career in finance before I retired a number of years ago. I serve on the Stockbridge Finance Committee. I used to be chairman of the Stockbridge Planning Board. I've been on some other not-for-profit boards during this period of my retirement and I'm delighted to be part of this one.
We're delighted to have you. Thank you for agreeing to, to serve, as they say. All right, so first order of business is approval of the minutes of January four, which were distributed by Christine earlier this week. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, Lucy.
Yeah.
The minutes indicate that I was absent from the meeting and that is only partially accurate. Or it's mostly inaccurate. I, I joined the meeting about twenty-five minutes late at five fifty-five or so.
Okay, we'll make that change. Thank you. Any other corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna call for a vote on the minutes as corrected. Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lucy say yes. George? George? George, is your mic working? All right, we'll come back to George. Tom?
Yes.
Jim? Jim?
Yes.
Great. Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine? Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Michael?
I'll abstain. I wasn't present.
Okay. Marie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Andy?
Abstain.
Okay. Minutes have been approved. Somebody needs to mute because we're hearing you cleaning up or whatever. So next thing on the agenda is the continued discussion of the eight-town regional school district agreement. And the first part of that is the transition period and the transition committee. You may all remember we were talking about that topic at our last meeting and approved the composition, but we're still talking about what the powers of the two transitional committees would be and whether they'd be the same or different. We circulated before this meeting a revised agreement that has in green or blue, depending on what is in sea green. What's been agreed and has redlined what's new since the last draft we circulated in November. And Russell, I know we only have you until six. But I'd like you and Jake together to update the board on the conversation with the DESI representatives on that question and the other things we talked to them about respecting the transition period before we get into the meat of our discussion. So Jake, I don't know if you want to lead off and then have Russell add whatever he has to add to what you have to say.
Sure. So we were able to have a conversation with Christine Lynch and Michelle Griffin. And they are basically the liaisons and state experts on regionalization. Christine's been at the table for quite a long time, has written a lot of papers on this particular topic, some of which we referenced in the work we've been doing. And we were really happy to do a check-in meeting with them. We ran through a variety of topics and one of those was this idea of the transition period, which is, if you, as you recall from the last meetings, the period from when we, when a new merged district is voted in by the member towns, is approved by the commissioner and then a board is appointed. When that happens and Christine ran us through, ran through this with, with us, you basically begin the transition period and that transition period runs for the balance of the fiscal year within which the transition, the appointed board is put into place. That, that entire, the balance of that fiscal year and then one more. During that time, as you recall, we would likely then bump into our biennial elections and you would be electing school committee members to complete the transition period and then become the committee when the district becomes operational. So the question that we asked point blank was, you know, should the transition, the appointed committee, the one that starts the transition period, period off have less authority as compared to the elected transition committee? And Christine Lynch was crystal clear in her response to us and that was no. They should not. So the idea is that your appointed board that begins this transition period, as she pointed out several times, and I know that I had a slide, which I do have available if you want to look at it, but was in the last presentation, has a lot of work to do. And so it's, you know, the variety of tasks that would be involved in setting up the district, getting agreements in place, you know, doing all the operational functions. So a lot of work to do in that transition period and so I think what we heard loud and clear was that the appointed committee would need the authority to do the work that's required to ultimately launch the district. So I'm glad to have Russell weigh in.
Before he does, Jake, why don't you talk a little bit about her discussion of the need for a CEO-type person to be in charge, even if the permanent superintendent has not yet been hired during the transition period?
Yeah, so that's, thanks for prompting me on that. So one of the things that we discussed, and I'm sort of clicking back to my notes here as I look on the screen, is the idea that during the transition period, obviously you have an appointed board that will be supporting the work, but you need people who are doing the work and at a minimum, the expectation, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, is that you would have kind of key central office roles in place. Even if on a temporary basis, even if you were hiring on a short-term contract, you would need a couple of key roles to ensure that, you know, the decisions that the, that the appointed board were making were able to be prepared and, and delivered and, and in detail by some paid staff in effect. And the positions that Christine, you know, just really reinforced, which really do fall under the authority of the school committee are that of CEO, in this case a superintendent, a business manager, business administrator, depending on what you want to call it. And then third would be a position that would be related to student services. So some districts call it a special ed director, but it usually encompasses more than just special education. The idea is that those three key roles would be necessary to be doing a lot of the planning work that would occur during that transition period. I would assume there would be other things you might need to in terms of clerical support. You know, obviously legal support, you know, Peter made that point and reminded us of that and you might even have, you know, some planning curriculum committees that would be set up to, to help, you know, make sure that when the district became operational, your teaching and learning systems are in place. But at a minimum, the expectation on department's ed side is that, you know, you, you are in effect a district, once the voters vote and the commissioner approves and you have a board in place and you need a CEO. And so it would be expected that you're hiring, contracting with superintendent or whatever you decide to call that role.
Russell, what, anything to add?
So I think what I would add is, one, they did mention there might be some flexibility on the length of their transition period. And two, I had indicated that potentially, and they seemed okay with this, that we could look at the administration that you have in place in the two districts and potentially look at, you know, a stipend for the existing administrators to get through the transition period. You know, if they're willing to do it, as opposed to actually contracting with some third party. So there's, so there's options basically that you can consider during that period.
Okay, thanks. And, and one question I asked because I felt we were all struggling a bit with the terminology in the draft agreement on these two different committees. I asked whether it would be appropriate and acceptable to DESI for us to call the appointed committee, the appointed transition committee and the elected committee, which happens in the November biennial election, the elected transition committee. So it was clear that both the appointed and the elected committees are operating during this transition period. And they said that was fine. That language was perfectly appropriate. So you, for those of you who dug into this revised draft, you'll see that we've got those new defined terms in the revised draft. So we have the appointed transition committee that gets appointed after the regional agreement is approved by the commissioner after the vote and after the regional agreement is approved. And then when we get to November and the biennial election, we have an elected transition committee and that elected transition committee becomes the permanent committee when the district begins operating. By operation of law, there's no new election or anything that happens. It's just the elected transition committee becomes the committee, the regional school district committee, school committee. So that's the way it now reads on pages seventeen and eighteen of the revised draft, just some language revisions that I wanted to explain. Okay, so with that, Jake, do you want to put up on the screen the, the three things we need to decide
Yep.
respecting the transition period tonight, so people have those in their mind?
Yep. Christine, if you could just give me sharing rights?
Yes. Just a moment. Okay.
Thank you. All right, so hopefully you all see this. I don't even think we really need to go into slideshow mode, but these are the three prompts that are related to the transition period that I would say are decision points, discussion points tonight. Should the appointed transition committee have the same authority as elected transition committee? How will the appointed transition committee be appointed? And then third, third is how will we stagger, how will we stagger terms of the eleven, eleven-member elected committee, recognizing that we're looking at four-year terms that, with elections that occur every two years. So we wouldn't want to have the entire eleven-member board turn over into every four years. We'd want some number of those members to turn over every two years, ideally six or five of the members. So about half the committee.
Okay, so why don't we start with item one? And Jake gave you a bit of a preview, gave you the point of view of DESI on this. But I'm gonna open the floor for further discussion and perhaps a motion. Patrick?
I make a motion that the appointed transition committee have the same authority as the elected transition committee.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is that the appointed transition committee would have the same authority as the elected transition committee and that authority would be that laid out on page seventeen of the draft regional agreement, correct? So is that what you intend?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so discussion of that motion. I don't see any hands. Nancy, do you have your hand up?
I have to get it out. Yeah, no, my question. I have a, I have a question about the transition, the appointed transition committee versus having the same authority as the elected transition committee. Can you guys be a little bit more specific about that? Like what the, how that would manifest on like, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of have an idea, but I'm a little bit, a little bit sorry about it.
Sure, so the, the full authority of a transition committee under the DESI regulations is as laid out on page seventeen of the regional agreement. So, yeah. So the question that we were debating at the last meeting was whether we wanted to curtail the powers of the appointed transition committee and leave to the elected transition committee certain powers that the appointed transition committee wouldn't have. And the one that we talked about the most at our last meeting was the hiring of a superintendent. So that was the example that we had the most discussion around at our last meeting. Does that help at all?
It does, it does. And the other question that goes with it, I'm sorry to be behind the times on this. My, my guess, part of my confusion is that it, that well, I guess it's, I'll, I'll just remove that confusion piece. We'll just leave it at that. Thanks, Lucy.
Okay. Don?
I think I, I might have been the one who proposed the limitation. So at least I should indicate that, having thought it over since our last meeting, I came to the opposite conclusion and no longer think there should be a separation duties or authority.
Okay, thanks. Bonnie?
Yes, did we agree that, I think it was Patrick White who had suggested, and it's the way we fill positions after the election, is that it would be, from what I see in the new tentative agreement, it would be a combination of the existing select board at the point this is done and any school committee members who would jointly advertise for and then interview and select the appointed transition committee?
That's our second discussion point. So we will get to that after we have a vote on this motion. But that is, that is something to be decided. There are different alternative approaches possible. One is to have a majority of the select boards of the five-member towns, sorry, got to get into the, the group here, into the, of the eight-member towns make the selection. That would be one possibility. Another possibility and alternative is to have the appointment be made by a majority of the select board members and the school committee members resident from the respective towns. And I guess a third possibility would be to have the select board make the selection in consultation with school committee members, but not giving them a vote. So there are different possibilities here and that's our decision point number two tonight.
Okay, I, I hate to put the wrench in it, but I think for me the value of an appointed transition committee is determined by who, who is making the appointments. And therefore to say that the authority is the same, which I, I agree with in basic, has a lot to do with that appointed transition committee. So that's my one, one issue. The second issue, which I guess doesn't come in, well Lucy, you'll decide for me here, is if we wind up with the problem that we've had across the two districts of write-ins because we can't fill slots, does that in any way impact our decision-making here?
Yeah. So I do want to hear from Russell before we lose him at six because that second question that you raised I was thinking about today because under under Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Fourteen E, a school commi-, a school committee may be appointed by locally elected officials. Okay, that's, that's as section fourteen E five, by locally elected officials. And so the wrinkle I was thinking about today, and Russell, I don't know if you had a chance to look at my email on this, but I was wondering if a school committee member is not elected, if the school committee member is appointed, is it permissible to have the transition, the appointed transition committee appointed by a school committee member who was not elected? Can, can they be part of that joint decision-making authority?
So in my opinion, they can. And so, so actually for town school departments, the vacancies are always filled by the board of selectmen and the remaining school committee members, which is the, the, that second option you had listed. So sometimes the board of selectmen and the school committee, either side could actually be an appointed person due to a vacancy. However, that has never been I'm not aware of any legal challenge to that and the statute does envision that the remaining members would be part of the decision-making, at least in the town appointment process for a town department, town school department. So I wouldn't see, and I'm not, there's no law stating that it was specifically, that it would be different for a region. So in my opinion, that would be acceptable because most of the, it's, it's only an exception when somebody's appointed to the school committee and that's really just in a vacancy situation.
Yeah, although we had that situation in Stockbridge this year after an election, right? So there was no one on the ballot. And then the write-ins declined. And so the actual school committee member was with us tonight, Bill, was appointed, not elected. And so just looking at that statutory language, the question was raised in my mind whether that elected school committee member can actually appoint or participate in the appointment of other school committee members because they're not an elected official.
Yeah, I, I would say no. However, the next time we talk to Christine, we can ask her to clarify that too. If she says something different, it would be contrary to what I've seen in other places. Because the stat, the statute allows for appointment of, in vacancy situations, so.
Lucy, I just follow up.
Yeah.
Just asking that once this is clarified through Christine that we get clarifying language in the regional agreement because we have had issues with people who are, where there hasn't been a clear election.
Yeah, we've got the language in the agreement. We have both alternatives in the agreement and tonight we're going to select which one we want. And then after we make that selection, we will confirm with Christine that the one we selected is permitted under law. Russell seems to think it's not going to be a problem. So we're gonna have that language one way or the other in the agreement. It will be very specific. Yeah. Yep, Patrick, then Don.
I'm, I'm gonna have to leave the meeting, but Lucy, if you do. I'm, I'm gonna have to leave the meeting, but Lucy, if you do need me, if you text me questions, I could text back, but I'll be at another meeting. Okay, thank you all.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome. Bye.
Patrick, then.
Lucy, we could, we could also just add, uh. If, if the motion on number two ends up being a majority of select board. Uh, slash school committee members, we could say qualifying school committee members and let the lawyers and, and Desi, you know, work out. Or what qualifies so that we can vote on it tonight.
Very good idea, Patrick.
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Don?
I think there's a reason why select boards are either three or five people. And it is so that they can reach a decision. What troubles me about this number two is that in each of the towns that have a single. Uh, school board member. That would mean four people having to make a decision. Four people can end up to two. With no decision made and no member appointed. And there's a peculiarity as well in Great Barrington, for example. There are five school board members.
Right.
Um, and I'm not sure how many members on the select board. Is that also five?
It would be five.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and Sheffield, Don, the, the issue that I think you are getting at. Would apply because there are more school committee members than select. Board members, right, Nadine?
Yes. So correct, but we've also had the situation where a school committee member resigned. And then there was three school committee members and three selectmen trying to choose and. The school committee was in favor of one person and the Board of Selectmen was in another, in favor of another person. So it's a real. Possibility that this could be a struggle. And I just wanted to point that out. Some of us have lived it, right, Bonnie?
Yes, exactly.
I think that's the point.
If that's a reality, then it is unwise to create a body to make a decision that has an even number of people. That makes no sense. To me.
Okay, John, and then Peter Dillon?
Uh, I, I think this discussion is important, but we have a motion on the floor on question one.
That's true.
Can we do that vote?
Yes, unless anyone objects. Okay. Any more discussion on item one? Okay, so let's take a vote on item one and then we'll finish up on item two. So. The motion is that the appointed transition committee. Would have the same authority. As the elected transition committee, and that would be the full scope of authority that is. Outlined in the draft regional agreement. So. How do you vote on that motion, Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Tom Berko? Tom, I think we might have lost Tom. Um, Jim? Jim?
Yes.
Has Deb joined us?
I have.
Oh, hi, Deb. Welcome.
Thank you.
Um. Are you ready to vote on this motion?
Yes, I am. I've been, I've been here. I've been here for the conversation. So yes, I vote yes.
Great. Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Has Kim joined us? No. Uh, Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Nancy? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Great. Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Bill, I'm gonna skip you until you're officially appointed by the moderator. I haven't forgotten about you. Patch, uh, I already did Patrick, uh, Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
Uh, Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Uh, did I miss anyone? Okay. So we have unanimity on that. So now we're moving to. Appointment of the appointed transition committee. Are we gonna have it? Be a majority of the select board? A majority of select, select board and school committee members from the respective towns. And I'm gonna just throw out. My possible alternative compromise, which would be. Majority of select board. Uh, in consultation with. Uh, school committee members from each respective town. So that's what's on the table. Peter Dillon, you go first.
I, I just had a clarifying question. In either context, if. One of the people voting to appoint. The person. Was themselves interested in being the person. Would there be a context for that person to recuse themselves? Like they can't vote to appoint themselves to a board? And would that address the number issue?
Well, it may or may not address the number issue, right? Because one of the people. It may be that none of the people want to serve. On the transition committee.
I have to say, it is optimistic there, Peter.
But as.
In most contexts, Andy, it's one person from each town with the. Uh, exception of Stockbridge and, and Great Barrington. So I, I, I think it's. It's not so optimistic. It's realistic that, that somebody will step up in each town.
Okay. Uh, I, I don't know that they would have to recuse themselves from a vote. I don't know the answer to that, but I would sort of doubt it. I mean, you're allowed to vote for yourself in. Any kind of election. So. I, I don't know the legal answer, Peter, but I, I wouldn't think they would have to.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, um. Patrick, then Steve, then Nadine?
So there's no guarantee of an odd number just because it's select board only. In fact, one of our member towns had a select board resignation. Uh, in recent memory. So I, I think that we should leave it up to the towns. To figure out how to resolve a tie vote. Um, I believe the adults in the room between the select boards and the school committees can easily. Uh, resolve that points on their own and that we don't need to really obsess over that. Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, since this is gonna happen within the next two years in Great Barrington. Even though there are five select board members and five school committee members. I am one of each, so I would not get two votes, so that would bring us to nine. So. That would take care of Great Barrington at least. And. Previously, I've seen it happen. Where that when you were trying to appoint two people. That, um, one person was appointed, they got sworn in and they broke the tie. So things can happen.
Nadine?
Uh, I agree with Patrick. I, you know, we obviously did resolve the issue when the. Board of Selectmen and the. School committee were tied. Um, and I, and I think that, you know. We can resolve it amongst ourselves. Um, but I also do. Kind of think about Don's position of we shouldn't set something up that. Could result in ties in many different places. But really, the, the biggest concern is that, um. If it's Sheffield, it's going to be three selectmen and four school committee members unless somebody steps away. So it's not an issue here. Steve just showed why it won't be an issue in Great Barrington. So it's really only an issue for the other towns who have. Boards of selectmen of three and school committee members of. One.
Okay, but I, but. There are really two issues. So the, the one issue that I heard identified was you could have a tie. And the other issue. That at least I heard identified, or at least was going off in my head. Was. The school committee members could outvote. The select board. And is that appropriate or not appropriate? So those are two separate issues. So while you wouldn't have a. Tie in Sheffield, you may have. Current school committee members. Um, appointing someone that all three select board members. Don't think should be the appointed person.
True. Hadn't thought of it that way, Lucy. Thanks.
Uh, Andy, then Bonnie?
Yeah, I'm intrigued by the, uh, by your, uh, your entrance. To this discussion. Uh, Lucy, because I, I, I actually kind of. Like the idea of the select board in consultation with the school committee. I think it, it. I mean, it's. You know, the reality is, is that. The. The votes, the popular votes for, I mean, there's more people who participate in the elections related to. The select boards. I mean, it's much closer to each town. Uh, than I think. Either of. The current regional school districts. When I speak from the standpoint of having been. elected to the regional school district.
Uh, Bonnie?
Thank you, um. I, I believe in, and Nadine brought it up, you know, each time we've had to fill a vacancy. There's been. A great deal of discussion. And it's adults. And people may have walked away not totally happy. But we each were able to hear the issues that. Um, if the select board were privy to certain information on the school committee members. Were privy to certain information. So. I believe it should be the select board, each member having a vote. And whatever remaining school committee members. Exist. Um. Having a vote. And given the situation that Peter Dillon brought up. I would assume if somebody submitted their name. Either as a select board member or a school committee member. That it would be understood that person would. Still be able to vote for himself or herself. In that configuration. So. My, my selection would be. Each select board member and each school committee member in that town having a vote.
Steve?
Yeah, I have to agree with Bonnie and Patrick. Um, I think we should just, can it really continue what we do now along select board and school committee jointly? To make the appointment. Your idea, Lucy, is interesting, but it devalues the. Work of the school committee. And I think each school committee and select board have that specific skill set. And I think working together. That, that is the best way to do it. And it may get a little. Tense for a few minutes, but we'll all figure it out.
Andy, is your hand up anew? Now, okay, Steve, is that a motion?
Yeah, I, I will be glad to make that a motion.
And I'd be happy to second it.
Okay, you want to state, state the motion?
Sure, the, the motion. Is that the appointed transition committee will be appointed by the majority of select board. And school committee members from each respective town.
Okay, do you want to put in that word qualifying school committee members to? Deal with the legal issue we just discussed?
Good point.
Yes, that's fine.
And I will second that.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, seeing no hands, I'm gonna call for a vote. Uh, Charlie?
Yes.
Carl?
No.
Uh, George?
Hi.
Tom? Uh, Tom's gone, I'm sorry. Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
No.
Don said no. Um. Cam? Kim? Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Shep, I'm sorry. Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So we have three noes. The, the yeses carry it. So we're gonna have a majority of select board. And qualified school committee members from each respective town. Uh, appointing the appointed transition committee. All right, so we made great progress. Um. Third item. Is how to stagger the terms of the eleven member elected committee. Remember. The elected transition committee gets. Uh, elected at the first. Biennial election, which is. Held in November. Our next one will be in twenty twenty-four. And the goal here is to have staggered terms so that you don't have complete. School committee turnover. In any one election year. So you want to stagger and have. Approximately half. Have a two-year term and approximately half. Have a four-year term and then. After that initial. Election, everyone will then be on a four-year term. So we put together a worksheet as Don requested with. Two possible alternatives. There, there could be others, but. These are two that we came up with. And Jake, do you want to? Walk the group through the, the worksheet?
Sure, I just put them on the slides just so you could see it.
Okay.
Document right in front of them. So, um, and hopefully, correct me if I got any of this translation wrong. Lucy, I don't think I did, but I just want to make sure. Um, so obviously you would have your district-wide. Elections. Held in twenty twenty-four theoretically. On November twenty twenty-four. And what we have on the worksheet is that. We would identify. Because Great Barrington and Sheffield have more than one. Elected member, Great Barrington having three and Sheffield having two. We would identify the individual. With the, um. In Great Barrington with a first and second highest. District-wide vote count. As assigned to four-year terms. The third member would be assigned the third. Highest vote. Gathering. Um, elected. Great Barrington rep would be in a two-year term. So you'd start Great Barrington two with four, one with two. Sheffield would do the same thing, except for the top vote getter would be in a four-year term. And the second highest vote getter would also be elected to the committee. Uh, would be in a two-year term. So we start with that as step two. Does that make sense, everybody? So then this is, you certainly have a decision to accept or reject that, but. We had that as a, as a constant. And then, um, yeah, I was asked to sort of put together what are at least. Two options we might consider. For how we would balance the rest of the terms. And, um, in option A. We treated the remaining six towns. Equally. And we said that we would continue to rank. All, remember, all members are being elected district-wide, so we'll have district-wide. Um, vote counts. And. We would basically, um, identify. Um, the individual, individuals in, um, the remaining six towns. In this case, it would be, um. Uh, three of the six communities. So the three highest vote counts. Um, from the remaining six communities would be in four-year terms. And the lowest three. And the lowest three individuals from those six towns would be in two-year terms. So it would basically be scattered across the six towns based on the total. Counts of those individuals received. So what the result would be, would be, you would have um six reps who would start with. Four-year terms, two from Great Barrington, one from Sheffield. And then three from the remaining six communities. And then five would have two-year terms. Option B. Is to um. Do I have this right?
No.
No, I screwed something up, sorry.
Yeah, you got the wrong thing in option B. Option B.
Let me go back to my computer.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
And I will stop sharing so I don't confuse anybody. So option B would be um to treat. In this, you know, this, I think will be. Hotly discussed and debated over the next few minutes would be to treat. The election of two and four-year reps by current district configuration. So we would look at. Reps selected in Berkshire Hills and let reps present uh represented in, elected in Southern Berkshire towns. So in this case, um. The two remaining um Stockbridge. And West Stockbridge reps. Um I'm gonna screw this up, Lucy, I probably need to take a pause and have you jump in.
Okay, so the idea. With option B was to. Achieve some balance. Between. The Berkshire Hills towns and the Southern Berkshire town. Uh on how. On the representatives that will have four-year terms, in case that's important to anyone. So the way it works is. Um elected representatives resident in New Marlboro, Alford, Monterey and Egremont. The ones that have just. One representative each. With the two highest district-wide votes. Would have a four-year term, so you know Sheffield already has one for your term cuz we just covered that, right? And then among the remaining four towns in the old Southern Berkshire district. The two highest vote-getters. From those four towns would get four-year terms. And the remaining, the other two would have two-year terms. And then in. Looking at the Berkshire Hills towns, other than Great Barrington that we know already has two. Um the elected uh representatives in Stockbridge and. West Stockbridge. Will each have an initial two-year term. So the result of all that. Is that we've got five reps that are gonna have four-year terms. Um out of that, two will be resident in Berkshire Hills towns. And three will be resident in Southern Berkshire towns. Uh and then the remaining six. Would have two-year terms initially, but of course, after the first term. Uh everyone gets four-year terms, so it's just for that initial. Uh two-year period that any of this comes into play. The second option is more complicated. I personally don't think it's necessary, but for those who are worried about. Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire balance. As to who has a four-year term and who has a two-year term. Option B achieves some guaranteed balance there. Any question, any questions about that? And it's, it's, um I know we don't have a slide, but it's on page thirty-one of the draft agreement. Option A and option B. So Carl, I see your hand up, and then.
Yeah, um. Uh thi- this, this comment is, is uh only partially facetious, but uh. I, I've gotten to the point in my life where I assume the discounts. Of two and three-year subscriptions in favor of one or even six, one year or even six months. Um in the unlikely event that I was a candidate, I would have to convince, I would have to go around convincing people. To not vote for me, so I had only a two-year rather than a four-year term.
Thank you, Carl, that was very helpful in deciding the issue.
Well, well, uh but you know, I, I, I might be the oldest member of this group or close to it. And I can't imagine that I'll, that I'll be mobile in four years, so in four years from November twenty twenty-four. Um I, I might be fossilized, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, that uh. Why, there probably isn't a better way to do it, but I, but I, I, I see the issue there.
Yeah, I mean, I think your, your facetious comment sort of illustrates. Why we really don't have to jump through hoops to worry too much about. Who gets a two-year term and who gets a four-year term, you may be right. It may be that the people who run want the two-year term and not the four-year term, but um this was just in case. This option B was in case people were worried about the possibility. With option A. That um that two. The three highest district-wide votes. Went to, for example. New Marlboro, Alford and Monterey. Um or let's do it the other way, it's better to do the example the other way, went to Stockbridge, West Stockbridge and New Marlboro. So the result there would be that. A supermajority of the four-year people would be from the Berkshire Hills towns and. A minority would be from the Southern Berkshire towns, but. Everyone's gonna be on the school committee, and if you have a two-year term and you're successful and you wanna run again. Then you'll get a four-year term on top of that, so. I don't really think it's a huge issue, but we were asked to bring forward a couple of options, so. Jake very creatively came up with this.
Apparently, I, I apparently can't explain them, even though.
This option that confuses even him.
I wrote it.
Alright, um Don and then John and then Patrick, and then Bonnie.
I'd like to move first option.
I'll second it.
Who seconded it?
Can we add step two to the motion from the previous slide?
Uh yeah, Jake, can you put step two up?
Yeah, I'm gonna um, what I'm gonna do is just bring the whole, the actual document up, I think. I think this'll work, let's try it, can you see that worksheet now? Yes?
Yeah.
Figure?
Margit, please.
So again, this is step one where you're selecting. You're identifying your four-year. Um terms. Um in the two districts that have more than one representative, and then again, what you're deciding right now is this three A or three B. Three A being really six-townwide ranked. Voting identification for your terms and the three B is really partitioning by Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire.
Lucy, I have an unrelated question, I would like to know how Patrick has managed to have his hand on one. Uh participant and his face on another cuz whatever he's got, I would like a little bit of it.
I, my computer audio doesn't work.
Yeah, he does this all the time.
He, he's very technologically savvy is the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Um alright, Don.
I think we have a motion in a second.
Yeah, we do, now we're having discussion. Done.
Me?
Yeah, you have your.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't think it's worth discussing very much.
Okay. Um Bonnie?
Uh I meant to put my hand down, I'm satisfied with now.
Okay. Alright, so um the motion on the floor is. To have this staggering of terms as reflected in the draft agreement. Worksheet for one, two and three A. That's the motion on the floor. I don't see any more hands. So I'm gonna call for a vote. Uh Charlie?
Whatever John Silver said, um what is it, A?
Yeah, you're just voting in favor of the motion, correct?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh Carl?
Yes.
Uh George?
Uh yes.
Tom, oh, Tom's gone, I keep making that mistake, Jim? Jim?
I wanna vote for three B to make uh. Um. This is then Jake feel better?
Jake, Jake likes agreement. Jake likes agreement, so are you voting yes or no on three A, Jim?
I'll vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Andy? Andy? Sandy still with us? Uh Sarah?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we're unanimous on that. Great, um so now we're gonna move to. The working name of the new eight-town regional school district and. The working name that is on the regional agreement is Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District. Uh we can either adopt that name, adopt a different name, or. We could adopt this name as a working name and then write into the district agreement. That the new school committee uh would work to. Determine a new name for the new region, so I think those are. The three options, this name, another name. Or leave it to the new school committee to come up with the new name of the new district.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Southern Berkshire Hills as the name.
Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
That was Carl, okay, discussion. Wow, Jake, people like this idea of yours.
I'm tempted to uh introduce assessment tonight.
Yeah.
Go for it, Jake, go for it.
Uh we've got a hand up of Peter Dillon. Uh hand, hands are coming up, okay, Peter, you're supposed first.
Jake, discuss your, your rationale for the apostrophe.
Uh I don't think that's an apostrophe, I think it's a um.
It's a footnote.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The working name of the new two BD, two BD, sorry.
Yeah, good, sorry.
That was so kind, Peter. Discuss your rationale for something that makes no sense, okay, um. Carl, Patrick, and then Peter Taylor.
Um this is not a suggestion necessarily, but has any thought been given to the uh idea of allowing. The uh citizens of the eight towns to uh determine the name.
Well, I think my alternative three was sort of allowing for. Community input on that, and I, I don't think. We wanna have, you know, of the ballot-wide initiative on choosing a new name, but. Yeah, some thought has been given to that, but the motion on the floor is to adopt the name now. So who did I say was next, Peter Taylor or Patrick, I can't remember now. Peter Taylor, why don't we go with you?
Sure, I'm, I'm somewhat reluctant to even offer this up, but we've talked a lot about. Regional identity and becoming an eight-town regional. Affiliation and affinity, and it's my experience, you know, living and working here, that oftentimes South County is used. As a way to refer to the eight towns, and so as that is from, you know, potentially familiar to people. Should we go with what's familiar to identify the region that we're trying to? Um bound together for the sake of high-quality education for all our kids.
So you're suggesting South County Regional School District? Okay. Um Patrick, Bonnie, and then Andy. Patrick, one of your personas has the floor.
Um I think that uh, I think that six words that are multi-syllables makes for. A lot to swallow or a lot to say and a really tough acronym, and I think we should simplify it to South Berkshire School District. Get rid of regional, get rid of hills, just could do a simple, right off the tongue, S B S D.
How we could use Russell right now, Jake, do we need regional in the?
I think we do.
That's what I.
You need regional.
Yeah. So South Berkshire Regional School District.
Sounds kind of familiar.
Yeah, that's the.
That's the problem.
That was the kind of the concession, which was the meld two names together.
I just don't think it's a problem, I think South Berkshire, yeah, yeah, we live in a moment where you have two districts, once they're combined. Couple of years down the road, that's all everyone is gonna know is what the name is, and having an easy name. Is gonna be in the benefit of the district, I think we gotta get out of our head that we're so focused on being two, this is going ahead as one, South Berkshire, that's where we are. Anyway.
Okay, Bonnie, then Andy, then Nadine, then Susan.
Um I, I would like us not to do it, that this is. The final decision, I think. You know, through the interim period, but I think there may be other discussions that need to take place. In the future, so to decide this forever. I, I. Especially after Patrick just introduced those concepts. I would prefer us not making a decision on the name as a locked-in stone. But just as a temporary.
So you, you like my alternative three? Which is to have this as a working name and then leave to the transition committee.
Exactly.
Of choosing the final name, okay?
Exactly, there may be things that we're not taking into consideration.
Okay, Andy?
Yeah, I, I, a couple, my first, uh my first inclination was the urgency of now, but certainly number three would. Uh serves a purpose. Um I, I, a couple of the names that got bandied about there in a moment seemed to, I was a little concerned. a couple of the names that got bandied about there in a moment seemed to, I was a little concerned because I consider, for instance, and I, I think that folks in those communities consider themselves part of South County, such as Lennox and Lee and, boy, I'd hate, I hate to leave anybody out. I'd hate to leave anybody feeling sore about, you know, that we're, you know, so I, maybe there's something even more anodyne that we could choose that potentially could reflect. Um, you know, we could call ourselves the Lake District or something like that. I don't, yeah. But I, I, you know, I, I just absounding with the label South County strikes me as a, a little, there's a little hubris there.
Yeah, interesting. Um, Susan and then Nadine. And then Don.
Hi, yes, thanks Lucy. Um, I'm in agreement with Bonnie. I think this is a, a great working name, but I do think that conversations may evolve as we go forward. And I think it would be, um, I think it's prudent to let the new uh Regional School Committee determine the name. That's what I would prefer.
Nadine?
I like this name. I think it should be the working name. Um, and if anybody cares what the conversation with the kids was at the kids forum, they were really focused on hills. And they liked the idea of the hills maybe becoming part of their new mascot. Just tossing that out as a little bit of information that came from the young people that I had the pleasure of listening to. Um, but I, I'm in favor of this as the working name.
Are you in favor of this as the permanent name or is the working name and then leaving the final selection to the transition committee?
I really love the, love it as the permanent name. However, I do think it's important to let the new school committee and perhaps the students have an opportunity to voice in what they want to call their school. And nothing's permanent, Bonnie. The, the, the middle school up in Great Barrington changed their name, so nothing's permanent.
And that, just, just to mention, I think you all know this, but assuming that, um, this merger occurs, assuming that a single high school occurs and the high school is built, there'll be a whole naming process around the high school too, but I, which I would assume would be heavily community involved.
Right, but I, I think I'm right when I say this. And again, we can check in with Russell. Unless we build into the regional agreement the ability of the school committee to change the name of the district. Uh, you can't change the name of the district unless all eight towns agree. Right? Because that would be an amendment of the regional agreement. So, um, if we select this, um, and it's approved, then you'd have to go through the amendment of the regional agreement process to change the name of the school district. All right, uh, Nadine, did you have your hand up? Or is yours down? John Silver has his hand up.
Um, when we say that we might allow the transition committee to make the decision, are we talking about the appointed transitional committee? We certainly can't wait till the school committee is there because we're already gonna have a district. The other thing is if we're presenting a regional district to the towns this spring, I don't think we have time to wait on this. Because then we have to go back to change the name.
Now, if we build into the regional agreement, if we delegate to the transition committee, the power to uh choose the name with community input, then we would not have to amend the regional agreement in order to allow that to happen.
Did you check that with council?
Sounds good to me.
I'm sorry, Lucy, did you check that with council? Because I don't think so. I think, I think the agreement, once it hits the, once it hits the warrants, the agreement's the agreement and it has to have a name on it.
Yeah, but it can be a working name and the agreement could provide in the agreement.
Well, okay, you're, you're the lawyer, but I, that's not.
Well, we will confirm with council, but that's my understanding.
It seems like the voters would be voting on that.
The voters would be voting on an agreement that says we have a working name and the transitional school committee has the power to determine the permanent name. That, that would be the vote.
I'll, I'll look forward to hearing what council has to say.
Okay. It may have egg on my face, but makes sense to me. Charlie Kitchen?
Lucy, you gonna put this into a motion?
No, there's a motion on the table.
Right.
The motion on the table is that we adopt Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District as our permanent name for the district. That's the motion on the table.
Okay. Just speak to that motion and to a point uh someone just made.
Yeah.
I would hate to hang the passage of the agreement on whether or not certain towns do not want the transition team to make a different choice after they voted. So I'm not in favor of delaying this. I think this is our obligation.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, people ready to vote?
One, one last thing. Is this worthy of a text to Russell?
Oh.
He did offer, he provided.
Good idea, Andy.
An out.
Good idea, Andy. Jake, can you text him?
Sure.
Patrick, in the meantime, while we wait, can you entertain us with some more personas?
My face almost voted no, and I voted yes on the last motion. My, my voice voted yes. Just saying.
I, I wish we could take a screenshot of all the smiling faces here tonight.
Yeah, why don't you slip in the assessment methodology, Nadine?
We really don't have, we don't have to wait on council, Lucy. What, if we make this motion and decide that it's still tentative, the matter remains under consideration until we take our final vote at the end. So if we are ready to vote on this, we can vote on it. And if council says it's wrong, then we just reconsider.
Good point.
Good.
So I move the vote.
So you're calling the question. Well, is there any objection to voting on um the motion that's on the table now, which is, um, Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District is the name for now and in perpetuity, assuming our district gets formed. All right, seeing no objection. Andy, you okay with our moving forward with the vote?
Sure, I, I'm frankly, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with almost any name that is reasonable. I'm not, I'm not stuck on names.
Okay. Um, so Charlie?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, George?
No.
Yes.
Uh, Jim?
So if we want to wait to hear if it can be a temporary name, we have to vote no, correct?
Dude, that's the problem.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
No.
Okay.
That is correct. I'm sorry. If we vote yes and we're told that there isn't, there isn't legal option, we'll just revote it.
Well, we can, we can always re-vote every vote, I guess, but.
We're waiting for council, so that's.
That violates the urgency of now.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, Deb, on the motion that's on the table, Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District?
No.
Uh, Peter Taylor?
No.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Tara?
I'm having, I, 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 I'm having a problem if we can't change it if it, you know, later. Um, I'll, I'll vote, I'm gonna vote no.
Susan?
No.
Nancy?
Oh.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Okay. Um, Bonnie?
No.
Nadine?
No.
Patrick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Uh, Marie?
Yes.
Hi, Andy?
Hi.
Sarah?
Yes.
Um, who'd I miss? I'm a no. So Christine? Did I miss anyone? Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine yeses. Is that what you have, Christine?
Correct, I have nine.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten no's. So I think the no's, well, I can speak for myself. I, I love the name that Jake chose. I love Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District. I just would like to give the community an opportunity for input, if that's possible, under the law. Um, so I'm, my no is not against that name. I think it's a great name. I'm just worried about not soliciting some community input on it.
I'd agree with you, Lucy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I would, I, I agree. I have the same feeling. I like, it's not that I don't like the name.
Yeah, I, I just want to be really clear on the record on that, because I know we have press.
I'm first in the queue here, and would it be in order for me to make a motion for the Southern Hills?
Uh, I'm sorry, Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District as the working name um, with the provision that the um, school committee can change it with public input uh, contention that that is agreeable to council to go in that direction so we can have a vote on record tonight?
Which, which?
Second.
Committee.
I, I'm, I'm open to an amendment on that particular technical point.
Have the elected one do it. We're, we're already in, we're already rolling at that point.
So it would be the transition, pointed transition committee? I think it's the community input that I think is important. I think the students should have a say in what they think the school district should be.
Yeah, if you say the transition uh, school committee, I, I will second it.
All right, I will.
I already made my motion.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District as the working name um, with the provision that the appointed transition committee uh, can with community input revisit that name subject to council's uh approval.
We should say should, not can.
Should revisit.
I, I think you want to obligate them to review it with the uh, community.
Yeah, I put, I put community input in my motion to Lucy. I think that's, that's the driver for me.
Okay, you want to restate the motion, Peter?
Sure, if I can. Uh, I, I, I make a motion to adopt Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District as our working name with the provision that the appointed transition committee should revisit that name with community input to determine a final name for the district.
I'll second it.
Subject to approval of council.
Subject to approval to council, yes.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Susan, you have your hand up?
Um, I, that's the motion I wanted to make, so I'm fine. Okay, Carl?
Um, there's no definition in, in the motion or at, at least that I've heard of what with community input means. That could mean almost anything. Um, and, and uh, I, earlier I made the suggestion that I thought there should be community input. And then it seemed after the vote that um, a yes vote was the, was this, was equivalent or, or uh, was going to deny community input. And that certainly was not why I voted yes, because I think there should be community input. So I, I think we have a, 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 a certain lack of clarity about a number of things. And one of them is what does community input mean? Does it mean a vote? Does it mean a forum at which people who are interested enough to show up, show up and, and say what they think? I, I, I don't know that we're giving the, the, that school committee uh, sufficient guidance as to what community input means.
Are you volunteering to be on the transition team?
Uh, if I'm alive, maybe.
All right, I, I hear your comment, Carl. Any other comments? Andy?
Uh, I, I think we're confla, it feels like we're conflating naming like institutions like schools with the naming of an administrative, essentially an administrative body. And I, I, my mind goes back to our founding fathers when they wrote the constitution in Philadelphia. And they went out to the public and asked, what should we call this court? The, the head court? Should be the Supreme Court, the Supremes, the, you know, I mean, they didn't. They wrote a constitution that said, named it the Supreme Court, and then that went out to vote in state legislatures or, you know, state legislatures. And that's what was placed in front. So I, I, I mean, to me, this feels like an abdication of the basic responsibility of this committee. Is, I mean, it's an administrative body. It's not a building. It's, uh, you know, I, I suspect that when they named Berkshire Hills Regional School District and Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District, it was not put out as like, you know, well, here, take your top three. And, you know, that's, it, 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 we're just trying to get something done here. And to me, you know, this, all this badminton over a name strikes me as like just getting in the way. Sorry.
Don?
Do you not see my hand?
I see a lot of hands. I'm sorry, Bonnie. I'll get to you next.
All right. Um, the assumption under the, underline this discussion is that somehow it would be so difficult for the new school board to submit a new name to the eight towns. And I don't think that's true at all. I think it would be a very simple procedure. So I think we ought to name it as Andy has suggested. And it goes implicitly that if the new school board starts hearing objections to the name or thinks there may be a better name, then they can have a hearing, have people come in and speak, and they can adopt a uh, a new name and submit it to the eight towns.
Okay, so you're speaking against the motion.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Uh, Bonnie, go ahead.
I, it, I think probably an easy.
I, it, I think probably an easy thing would be under the section um, on page sixteen, eighteen. Page sixteen, that the appointed transition committee shall either confirm or, uh, the formal name of the school district. And we just listed there as one of their duties. We may be missing something in deciding this right now, and now that it's just the other motion was defeated, I think we could just move ahead. And I wanted also, I have a question. What's the rationale for it being the appointed as opposed to the elected transition committee?
Well, as the person who's seconded the motion, I think the problem is the same with all the other duties. That we're gonna be very late in the game, and I think the transitional committee with, with community input is, is just as capable as everyone says is the finally elected committee, and they'll, they'll just have to do it much later.
Okay, so it was a time concern, John?
Only that, of course.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Nancy?
Um, so, um, to Andy's point, can you guys hear me? To Andy's point that, um, you have a working, working name. I don't happen to like the name. I, I'm one of the mayors, but um, to that point, I don't think that too many of us will get Undermountain, New Marlborough Central, Mount Everett, I'm getting that as, um, as Southern Berkshire Regional School District. Um, we made a name, so that I'm not sure that by naming the district something rather, you know, descriptive, if not particularly elegant, um, does not mean that the building, if it does happen, um, that the, um, that the building itself is going to be, have some kind of bland name, then I just wanna say that. Monument is not Berkshire Hills. I mean, it is, but it's not.
So, so Nancy, are you speaking in favor against the motion on the table?
I'm still speaking against.
The motion on the table, okay.
I just, I'm just putting it out there, that whatever, whatever the district gets called, it's, it's not what the.
Who's the motion on the table? Lucy, I have a quick update from Russell, if you wanna hear it.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, just, I asked the question about the name, and he said, once the towns approve the regional agreement, you would need to amend the regional agreement to change the name. The vote would depend on the regional agreement language, which we'll be talking about how you amend the agreement, and that's unanimous majority or two-thirds. I said, could you build a provision in that the transition commit, transition committee can revisit the name in the agreement, um, without having to go back out, and he said, I think Desi would want a firm name when the region is formed. However, we can check with them to see if they would allow some flexibility based upon circumstances.
Okay. All right, so we didn't get a definitive answer, but he's leaning towards um, a permanent name now.
So the suggested name is the Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District?
Yes. Okay, Steve Bannon.
So, I, I think we should just permanently name it now. And my rationale is two points. I know a regional agreement amendment is a long process, whether it's just changing the name, or it's, just, I think it's prescribed by law. And the other is, where do we draw the line in the sand? We're gonna decide on the funding formula. We're, as this group, I assume, we've decided on other things. How, how many members are on the school committee, but we can't decide on a name? It seems some, somewhat strange to me that we are leaving the name up. I, I do agree that the names of the schools, if there's a new school at Monument, is something that will be, uh, of great interest to all eight towns. But I think this is a good name, i- and we should just go by it.
Okay. Um. Patrick, Andy, and John?
Uh, I just wanted to point out that Eileen Mooney has had her hand up for five or 10 minutes in the attendees list.
Okay, we usually, we usually take those at the end in public comments. Um. I don't know if Eileen has something uh, procedural that she thinks needs to be addressed. Eileen, if that's the case, maybe you could take your hand down and put it back up. Give me a signal.
She can also just shoot me an email. I'm watching my email.
Okay. Um, who did I say was next? All right, why don't we go Peter Taylor, John, and then Andy?
Yeah, based on, uh, so I, I will withdraw my most.
You're withdrawing your motion, okay. Is the second withdrawn? That's yours, John.
Uh, I, I'm, I will withdraw it, but I just wanna make a comment, which I, I think that everybody's making some very good points, and I'm not surprised that it was a one vote difference, and that the chair made the vote, made the deciding vote. No, I'm teasing Lucy. Uh, I, but I do, I do think that I just wanna think about, unlike, um, an assessment formula, for example, I do think that there is some value in getting community input on the name. It's, it's a, um, it's an identity issue, and, you know, a large part of what we're doing here is we're allowing eight towns to reinvent themselves as a district, and I'm really not opposed to, uh, get, getting public input before we make that decision. As long as we make it before, I would, I would love to be able to make it before we go to the town meeting, but we can't do both. So I just wanna throw that in, and, um, I'm certainly not gonna argue with, uh, the with, with the motion to withdraw, and so I will second the withdrawal, but I don't know where we go from here.
I think I have an idea.
Okay.
I, I make a motion that we table this discussion and, uh, give this to the outreach committee to work with for period of time and bring it back to the larger committee. Um, and we'll just deal with this down the road. I don't think we need to decide it tonight.
I'll second that. I'll second the motion, and I, what I like about this is we actually do have time to get a little, to get, not a little, to get community input on this, and then we can make the decision ourselves. So if that's possible, if it's not too much to ask of the outreach committee, subcommittee, uh, uh, this, I think this is worth discussing anyway, so I'll second it.
Well, at least throw it out on Facebook.
Um. All right, so, uh, the motion uh, to have adopt Southern Berkshire Hills Regional School District as a working name, subject to reconsideration by the appointed transition committee has been withdrawn. There's a new motion on the table to table this discussion item um, and refer to the community outreach subcommittee, the job of seeking to gather some community input and then bring the issue back to the full board. Did I get that right, Andy?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's been a second to that motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, any further discussion before we vote on the motion to table, Susan?
But, let me see them. Uh, yeah, I was, I mean, it, it sounded like Russell didn't have a very definite, well, didn't have a completely definitive answer to the question. So I would, I'm in agreement to table this, um, but I would prefer that we, we make an outreach to Desi to see if this is a plausible thing. Um, that would be my amendment to, or my suggestion to amend the motion before it goes to community outreach. Because I think we can get that answer pretty quickly.
Are we gonna get a more definitive answer than we got tonight, or, or are we going to, we're going to Desi instead of the attorney? Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, the attorney is going to Desi for us.
And then Desi will go to their attorney, so it ultimately ends up in the land of attorneys, right?
Yeah.
What a bad place.
Okay, um. Andy, do you accept that amendment to your motion?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, um. So you've made a motion to amend the motion on the table, so we would need a second to the motion to amend.
Me? I made the mo, motion to?
You made a motion to amend the motion that was on the table, so procedurally, I think what I need to ask is, is there a second?
Second.
George has seconded it. Okay, any further discussion? Bonnie?
I just wanted, I've gone to a few different websites, and we might have an issue be, and I don't know, you're the lawyer here, we have a few others. Every time I look up Southern Berkshire, I wind up Otis is included, Mount Washington is included, Sandusfield is included. Um, and I don't know if that would wind up being an issue at all in the identification.
We already have that problem with the existing Southern Berkshire district.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue, Bonnie.
Okay, fine.
Yeah. Okay. Andy, I'm gonna call on you, but, um, you need to smile.
It's been a long day, and this, this discussion is, I, I will admit, it's, discussion is discouraging. Um. I mean, it's some. So. Basically, we have a committee in place that is charged with gathering and providing involvement in the community. And I made a simple motion that certainly didn't need to have uh, an amendment, because the amendment could happen in parallel. The amendment didn't have to be as part, I mean, it could be concurrent. That action could be a, you know, doesn't need to be a dependency on our outreach committee involving the community in this decision-making process at all. So it just simply complicates a very simple motion to table and move this off to a subcommittee. Um, and then, at the same time, certainly, we can ask uh, Lucy and Jake to you know, that doesn't have to be a motion, that's just logic. So by, by obscure, it's a simple motion to table, and move on. So, whatever.
Okay, so.
I'm gobs now.
Susan, I think what Andy is asking is whether you consider withdrawing the motion to amend with the understanding that we're gonna get that clarification from Desi, and will likely have it long before community outreach reports back to the full board uh, with whatever it's been able to do in the interim.
Um, I, I certainly don't object to that, Lucy, but there was, I, um, not knowing that that would be permissible, the way I saw to proceed was through an amendment. And being, um, being a part of the community outreach team, I know how much is on our plate, and to solicit this information is, is really a lot more to ask than just to table and push it on. So I have no problem withdrawing my amendment, provided that there'll be some outreach to Desi to get an answer to that question.
Okay, and George, are you okay with that?
Um. Before I answer that, Lucy, I'd like, I, I'd like to, uh, I, I think what we're seeing tonight is something T S Elliott told us a long time ago. The naming of cats is a difficult game. And it's not, oh, the naming of cats is a difficult matter. It's not just one of those parlor games. And I think that's what Andy was trying to say. And, um, I'll withdraw my motion, or my second.
Okay, so we have on the table a motion to table this discussion item, uh, and allow the community outreach subcommittee to see what it can do and report back. Um, any further discussion before we take a vote on that?
That's. I wanna discuss. I think way too much is being made of this name issue. We're struggling in the finance committee with the allocation of operating expenses, the allocation of, of, um, capital expenses, present, future. Surely, we're not gonna be submitting those issues for input from the community. It would be a totally unrealistic process. Those issues are extremely complex. We don't need, there's no point. If, if we're not submitting those critical issues to the community, why are we bothering the community? Those few, those three, four, or five, or 10 who might respond to this question of the name? We have a perfectly reasonable name and Jake's suggestion, and I would like to see it voted on tonight.
Hey, Bonnie?
Oh, I'm sorry. My hand should be down.
Okay. All right, so I'm not seeing any more hands up on the motion to table. Um. So I'm gonna take a vote on that. Uh, Chuck? Chuck?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm in. Yes.
Okay. Um. Carl?
Yes, and I'm in complete agreement with, with what Andy has been saying, and I fear, uh, or I hope that no members of the community watch this latest section of our meeting.
Well, I, I would like to defend the performance of this board on all issues, including the important issue of naming the new regional school district. Um, so, I, I don't, I don't think we should be beating ourselves up over the interest people have shown in getting community input on the naming of the new district. I really don't think that's appropriate. I'm sorry to butt in.
No, but that, that, that's not what I was saying, but okay.
Okay, um, you know, we take enough hits. We don't need to take a hit over healthy debate, respectful debate over the naming of the new regional school district. Um, George, on motion to table. Um, Tom, uh, sorry, Jim?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John? John?
Yes.
Don? Don?
I guess I'll have to vote no, but, you know, tabling is such an easy thing. But I'll vote no.
Okay. Uh, Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Nadine?
Yes.
Patrick?
We're gonna once again agree with Don and say no.
Okay, uh, Michael?
Uh, no.
Marie?
I guess so.
Yes?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. Um. Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, Andy?
I gotta agree with Don. I would like to have a vote tonight and just get it out of the way, but.
And this is your motion?
I know, I know, but I'm gonna say no, I want out of the vote. But it, I mean, it, it, I, I, but I didn't expect it to take thirty minutes to get to it.
Okay, so you're voting no on your motion?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I'm a yes, so the yeses carry, so the, the item is tabled and community outreach is meeting on, well, I guess we can't put it on the agenda. Uh, it's too late. Yeah, it's too late, so it'll be in two weeks. We'll put it on our agenda. Um. All right. And in the interim, we'll get the ans, answer from Desi. So, we're at seven twenty, um. I think we probably should go to, um, the project manager and chair updates, and then, uh, any subcommittee updates, and then public comments. So Jake? So Jake?
I, I don't have much, just two, two items. I wanted to just mention that. Uh, Peter Dillon, Berkshire Hills received. Um, notice from Department of Revenue, Department of Local Services, um, on our community compact grant. It appears that the runway for the grant may be longer than we expected. So, um, the notice that Peter received said that we have until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. To complete the project, so. That was a little different than I, we had originally thought, which was we'd have, be able to spend the money till October. Through October twenty twenty-three, so. That's good news, uh, may allow us to, um. Sort of pace a, a little bit differently, but I just wanted to mention that is the only budget change. Since I talked to you all two weeks ago and shared the budget. And then the only other thing, um, and this may came up, come up in the, the subcommittee meetings is that. We do have an educational visioning. Convening plan for this Saturday, the Sheffield Senior Center from nine until noon. At the top of our webpage, there is a, um. A little registration link with a very basic agenda, so folks know what they're signing up for. We, we have about thirteen people signed up, which is not amazing, but it's enough that we're gonna run it. And we're hoping that, uh, other folks might consider, uh, participating on Saturday. That's it.
Okay. In terms of my update. I've been attending all the. Finance subcommittee meetings and Nadine's gonna give us an update on where the finance subcommittee is. Um, there's still a fair amount of work to do before the subcommittee. Can bring its recommendation to the full board on assessment methodologies, operating assessment. Capital cost for the new school. And capital costs for everything else. And so our original target. Of having a vote by this board by the end of February. Beginning of March. Is looking, uh, difficult. That timing is looking difficult, challenging. Um, and I think it's time for us to recognize. That we may not be in a position to take a vote. On a recommendation by the end of February at least. Um, and we may need to be well into March and maybe even April. Before we're gonna be there. If that's the case, then, um. We probably will not be able. To get this on the warrant for May first, uh, town meetings. Or town meetings that begin on May first. Um, and so I think it's time to surface that possibility. And talk about what our Plan B would be in that situation. And our Plan B in that situation would be to vote out. A recommendation a little later than originally targeted. And ask for special town meetings in each of the eight towns. In the August, September timeframe, which is certainly a possibility. And Jake and I thought it important that we signal that possibility to you tonight. So that you can be thinking about it. We've gotten. Uh, in the finance subcommittee, we got some initial feedback. To an adjusted timeline. Like that, that was very positive, and I think Nadine can. Can, uh, report out on that, but wanted the whole board to hear that we are now talking about that. As a possibility in the finance subcommittee. Jake, do you have anything to add on that?
Probably the only thing I would add is that, um. We should continue to work really hard. So. Okay, because, uh, that will. That date will also creep up on us, um. And I think it's really important that we move toward the decision point. So I would just say, I would. Um, be concerned that anyone would view this as a. Is an opportunity to, um. Let up on the gas at all. I think we need to continue to push hard with, with the finance committee and with the work this board has been doing in the regional agreement. You're making progress. Even when it takes a lot of discussion to get there.
Steve?
Yeah, I may have missed it, but I don't think this is an appropriate topic for a regular town meeting. I think regular town meetings can drag on for two or three hours. And this topic would be appropriate for a special town meeting. So I, I, I don't think there's any harm in this whatsoever. And because I actually think this should go to the ballot box, but I understand it can't. Um, the other thing I would say is, we need to rethink August because. We try not to do things in the summer because there's too many people who are away and won't get the, to vote. Um, so there's no absentee ballot on this, uh, at a town meeting, so I, I think we really need to think about this, not tonight at seven thirty, I understand.
There's nothing magical about August. I was just throwing out some months, August, September. Uh, it could even be October. Um, Andy?
Well, I just, I, I'm gonna agree with Steve, that, that, you know, certainly a special town meeting. Is, is appropriate for this, but, and also I agree with Steve that certainly, uh, the summer is, is not the best. Um, and then in terms of, of what Jake said. I have a feeling that nose to the grindstone, we'll be lucky to get it ready for a town meeting by. By fall. Twenty twenty-three, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, nose to the grindstone all the way. And that'll get us to a special town meeting come fall.
Okay. Patrick and then Bonnie?
I just wanna point out though, that special town meetings typically have. Half or lower the attendance of a regular town meeting and the trade-off on focus is. Is participation and frankly, the ability for, you know, for the. Uh, for folks who have a strong opinion one way or another on this, to, you know. More easily hold the day or, you know, sway the vote with a much lower attendance that you get at a special town meeting.
This one won't have a low attendance, Patrick, I guarantee you.
All right, I, I, I'll defer to you then.
Bonnie?
Hey, one, Lucy, I really wanna thank you for the statement you just made. Um, I really appreciate it. Here, I could speak for. A number of members of the Southern Berkshire School Committee. The, um, cautions that you're putting forward and the recognition that we need more information. And I totally agree with Steve. A special town meeting of this critical nature, which is the economic future. And of our communities and the well-being of our students. Is absolutely critical, so thank you for that. Jake, a question in terms of this Saturday. I know it's listed as education visioning. Do you not want regional planning board members to be there? To, to enroll?
That's, that's correct, because that's what we had discussed, I think. Several board meetings back about the risk of having a quorum in the room.
Okay, I just wanna confirm that that's the statement.
And we love to encourage others to participate.
Yes, and is there a tentative agenda? Because you remember, we asked you. Outreach, it's on the website, okay?
Yeah, I thought, I, I sent a note to y'all a few days ago about that, so thanks.
I haven't quite, and I have to publicly thank Nadine. I've been attending finance. I have learned so much and I'm still at like five percent. Major credit. Thank you.
Any, any more discussion on timing before we move on to subcommittee updates?
I, I just wanna go on record here really quick. That I respect and really appreciate. Our chair and her tactful and. Persistence in keeping this. Moving forward. Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you, Andy. All right, um, subcommittee updates, finance, Nadine, you've got the floor.
Yeah, well, uh, Lucy pretty much covered a good portion of what I planned to say tonight. Um, we continue to work through. The various models on the operating budget. Um, we've asked, um, to see some figures on what happens to the two districts if we don't merge. All of that is probably gonna be hypothetical, you know, how many kids might go to. Um, a new school with a voc tech program and what could that possibly cost, uh, other, other communities and. Who knows, you know, could be twenty kids from one town or fifty kids from a combination of towns. We, we don't know, but we are looking at that. We, um. We talk very intentional, um, we, we're giving a lot of work to Jake and Matt and they. Come back to us with, with great information. We moved on to the, um. Uh, capital budget, which comprises of the existing debt, the new high school project and future capital expenses. Um, you know, we talked about the ninety-ten split, um, and, uh, we've also looked at what it might have, what might. The numbers look like if we absorb the Southern Berkshire debt, because we've got one member on our board that feels. That if this merger were to take place within a business environment, the debt would be assumed, so. We're looking at all kinds of options and, uh, so I want you to know, we're not leaving any stone unturned. The town meeting discussion came up at our meeting, um, I, as a selectman, said, you know, if we're gonna do this at. Town meeting in May, we better, might ask people to bring breakfast and lunch for the next day, so. The, um. I think a special town meeting is, is probably the better place to go with this. Um, I feel strongly that attendance will be very high. Especially if it's a single topic issue, because people will be passionate about it and they'll put some time into it as opposed to they don't really care what. Is going on with the budget, which I don't understand why they don't care about town budgets, but, but that's what happens at town meetings. Um, I'm very grateful to the members, uh, of my committee. We're working very hard and, um. With the leadership of Jake and Matt, I think we're getting there. I do not plan to take my foot off the gas. We have to push, we have to come up with a, with a assessment that we feel is best for the community and, uh. And bring it to y'all as soon as we possibly can.
Thank you, Nadine, you're doing great work. Um, community outreach, not. New to report, we did get our January update out there. Circulated to the towns, circulated to town publications. What else, Jake? I don't have my agenda in front of me.
No, we have all the videos online. They're in English or in Spanish. Um, I would really encourage. Um, there's a lot of entry points to learn about the work of the board, and I think, um. The one-page briefs, the monthly updates and the videos are a good place for people to start, because obviously the reports are really thick. And so it's hard for folks to access those, so I think those. The people who watch the video, the over video, getting some really good feedback, it was really helpful to them.
Yeah, um, we've asked the, um. The two districts to work with us. Uh, collaboratively on outreach to parents. It's been a little bit of a struggle for us. Um, getting that group convened, so we hope to be able to work together with. The two school committees in, uh, a partnership. To, uh, get the information out to parents in their respective districts. So that's the update on community outreach. Anything more, uh, before we go to public comments? Okay. Eileen, your hand is down. Sharon's hand is up, so can you bring Sharon over? Um, Christine, we'll see if, if, uh, anybody else wants to weigh in.
Can you hear me? Yes, Sharon. Yeah. Okay, Sharon Gregory, Great Barrington, um, just, uh, one big question. It, it doesn't have to be answered now, but. Could Steve or Peter give an update as to sometime, as to what the effect of. Building and financing this new high school would be as we push the calendar on the vote back?
Go ahead, Peter.
Um. I'm in regular conversations with the MSBA and we're trying to work on a timeline. I, I think. Um. Um, I think as we conclude this part of the eligibility period, uh, a, a vote in. In September would, would be okay, but I wanna research that. Uh, a little more and I probably will have an update to share, uh, in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Good question. I'm gonna bring Joan over.
Yep.
Go ahead, Joan.
Um, yeah, I have a question with respect to, um, I guess, community outreach. Have the, uh, students been able to see the videos on the work of the panel and. You know, C V T E, some of the things that are being discussed, because I would think if they. If the parents haven't heard about it and the students see it, that's possibly another way to get more parent, more parental involvement.
Jake? You wanna answer or do you want me to answer?
Yeah, I'm not. I think, no, you're, you can answer.
So, yeah, so, um, the students could watch the videos. If they chose to, um, the videos, as you know, Joan, are posted on the website. Um, I don't think there's been any formal presentation. Of those videos to the students at, for example, a school assembly. But they're certainly accessible to the students and the parents, uh, on our website.
Okay, I didn't know student government or. Uh, some organization amongst the students themselves sort of brought it up rather than expecting them to go to the website, that's all.
Yeah, it's a good question. Peter, do you have anything?
Yeah, when I, when I shared like the monthly updates or other things on, on. Uh, Facebook, we, I can see the number of people that look at it. It's typically around. Uh, fifteen hundred, uh, and I can see engagement and all this stuff, so. There, there's some messaging going there, um, for this, this meeting coming up on the weekend. Uh, I sent out a, an email announcement to almost two thousand. Uh, people and lots of people clicked on it, uh, wh- whether people. Uh. Internalize stuff is, is one step beyond clicking on it. Uh, but, but both school districts have, have channels to, to get, um. The information out and, and I think we'll continue to, to do that.
Thank you.
Beth, do you have anything to add?
We've been doing the same thing. We've been regularly sharing, um, the, um, every. Every piece of communication that comes out via, um, school messenger, so it's. Heading to all families, um, it goes to all faculty and staff. Um, and it goes, um. You know, ev- everywhere we can put it, um, it's up on our website, um, the link to the page. And we refer to it, so people have the ability and access and notice. As well.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Patrick?
I just wanted to point out that when we went to the panelist slash attendee. Method of running these meetings, we did it because of the Zoom bombs. And I, I personally believe that if the public has a comment. On a topic of discussion, they should be able to make that comment before we vote on that topic of discussion. And that we shouldn't wait till the end of the meeting if a member of the public raises their hand to listen to them. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for our next meeting. Uh, and if the majority agree with you, I, I would be fine with that. I know some have a different point of view on that, so we'll need to discuss it. Um, all right, I don't see any more hands up in the attendee, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you, Tara, second?
Second.
All right. I'm hearing no objection, the meeting is adjourned at seven forty-one. Thank you, everyone, again, thank you for your patience and attendance, really appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Lucy, thanks all.
Thank you, Lucy.